The general character of that area is, you know, commercial and industrial as we'll be right here. You know, there is property across Bowles Road that was approved for the Grand Avenue gravel mining operation and long-term that is a residential end-use. Again, that's maybe twenty, thirty years from now, but you know, eventually that's gonna, assuming that project moves forward eventually, you know, a long-term plan for that is, is a residential development there. So, you know, thinking long-term, again, you know, there's, I don't know if that impacts your, your thinking with respect to landscaping, you know, traffic, things like that. I don't think traffic is a big concern here. But, you know, we, we do know that they're not proposing to do, you know, make any improvement to the exterior of their property in terms of landscaping, anything to kind of, you know, improve the outward appearance from Bowles Road of that, of that property. And that's not something that, you know, you have a fair amount of discretion in terms of what you feel that is appropriate for that site, but if you, again, want to see some additional landscaping, you could certainly require them to submit a landscaping plan if you're inclined to do that. And that can possibly be handled as a condition as long as you provide them with some direction in terms of what you would want to see there so I know what I'm looking for when we get the updated plan. But that is kind of something that the planning commission can, again, you have pretty, pretty broad latitude there depending on what you feel is, is appropriate. Item B says that the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the Lowell master plan. We've talked about that in the previous section. So this is an industrial property and an industrial lead plan and a zone area, so we do feel that it is consistent with the master plan. Item C, it shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway streets, police, fire, drainage, drainage disposal, water, sewer. So, um, this is a Class C grower. They can grow up to two thousand plants. It sounds like, based on statements from the applicant, that the, you know, there won't be a huge increase in water use. The electricity is likely a different story and, you know, talking with some of the, seeing what's, you know, been done there, you know, have been needed to be improvements made to other properties where they're doing growing on the site. So, um, that is something that Lowell Light Power, you know, will need to make sure that they're, you know, comfortable with, with what kind of electricity infrastructure they have on that site and that they're not gonna, and they have the capacity to provide adequate service to the site and things like that. Other public, other public facilities, so, you know, streets, police, fire and things like that, I think we're okay. Uh, the drainage structures, again, we would need to see, uh, you know, some consideration for stormwater management in accordance with the Kent County Drain Commission standards with the city applied. And that's something that, just providing some calculations and then whatever management they're going to utilize for the property, something that we would just need to see prior to final approval. Item D, the proposed special land use does not create excessive additional requirements of public cost for public facilities or services. So our biggest concern here is going to be the electricity usage. So, um, you know, the concern here is that, is that you approve something that has an enormous impact on public services that, you know, at the expense of the taxpayers, that you have to spend all this extra money to service this one particular land use. And so the only, um, you know, to me, I think the only major concern that, you know, could come up here would be the, the electricity usage and so that's why, working with Lowell Light Power to make sure that they are, um, you know, the infrastructure is there and all that and they're, they're, that's something that we defer to their judgment in the past with these kinds of things. Item E, proposed special land use will not involve uses, activities, processes, et cetera that will be detrimental to persons or property, excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glitter, or odors. There are, so the main comment here, as with all of these grower facilities, is going to be related to odors. Um, I don't expect significant traffic problems. I don't anticipate, you know, noise issues, um, smoke issues, but odors are obviously a concern with marijuana establishments. So the narrative states that heat fact systems would be designed to meet the noise control standards and, um, um, they have proposed several measures for mitigating fumes and odors and we'll give that more in a minute. Um, they've talked about using a high-pressure fogger to help mitigate odor. And so again, this is something where I think, um, this is a bit different from what some of the other applicants have talked about, so it, you know, may be prudent to ask some, you know, additional questions at the applicant just to get a better idea of how it works, how effective it is, um, and things like that. Uh, then the last standard F says that the proposed special land use shall comply with applicable federal state local requirements and all copies of permits shall be submitted to the city. That's something that's always included as a condition of approval. That includes the general special land use standards, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioners, any questions on the special land use review standards, A through L?
No, we can put it in there. The, they give with Charlie light power to, because you guys know what your power draw is. I'm assuming Hoover has enough power there, but...
Yes, we've actually met with Lowell Light Power a couple of times and applied all of our little calculations and we're good to go.
Okay.
So, and we do have, um, a, uh, as I suggested, conditions of approval. They receive approval from and comply with any stipulations from Lowell Light Power regarding electricity management. So, that's something that's already covered.
What is this new, or this, I mean, new, the fumes?
This fogger, was it? Did you say?
A fogger.
Fogger.
Yeah, pressure fogger.
Yeah, so with the greenhouse, obviously, there's a much larger volume of air than we have to move and carbon filtration is just not sufficient for something that size. Um, so what it is, it's a high-pressure fogging system. Essentially, it's a stainless steel ring that goes on the exterior of all of the fans. Anytime the fans are activated, there's a botanical-based odor neutralizer that's just mixed in with about ninety-five percent water in the neutralizer and that fog just comes on. So all of the air comes, that is exhausted from the greenhouse, hits that fog, neutralizes the odor.
How effective?
Ninety-eight percent.
Is, is there a way, well, I would like to see the breakdown of that. Not necessarily needed tonight, but...
Like specs or...
Yeah, it was all in the, in the narrative. There's a, a large spec sheet of everything, actually, um, some, some lab tests for the neutralization and it was quite a bit of information, probably more than you want to see.
Well, we're always learning new ways to filter air, you know?
It's, it's very efficient because it doesn't cause, you know, with the carbon filtration, that needs to be changed three to six months. This is a, we replace our fifty-five gallon drum of neutralizer and it's, keeps on rocking. So we don't have a, we don't have a lapse in time where, oh man, smell's escaping. It's consistent.
Is that neutralizer pretty environmentally safe, I would imagine?
It's one hundred percent biodegradable. I mean, you can swish it around in your mouth. Like I said, it's botanical-based, so...
It's something that's going to apply to California greenhouses right now, to help neutralize the smells. So, we're adopting that technology.
Yeah, because technology's changing faster than we can keep up with it, I think.
Absolutely.
It's getting better.
I, I, I like the fact that, you know, you realize that carbon is not going to do it and on the, sounds like a much better solution to it. So, but I don't have that breakdown as it's been to us in our sheet. So Andy, if you could email me that, please?
Yep. I will, yeah. It's in their packet. It's on attachment B. It's like twenty pages and there's several, there's letter and then several technical data sheets that kind of support what they're saying. Got something called Cannabusters, is that correct though? Okay.
Can you just send that to my city email?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to see a, or I, I, I don't necessarily need to see it, but a landscape on Bowles Road. Lack of trees there is pretty noticeable, frankly. And as Andy said, the mining operation across the street is proposing to eventually, regardless, it's part of our normal procedure would be to have, you know, the landscaping done. So, uh, I'm, I'm fine with okaying that, having Andy look at the landscaping plan as, as necessary.
I think you want to do something, you get the opportunity to be a little, have a little, like, forethought there and do something a little different than just the, than just the, the minimum because you got, I forget what the time span was before the gravel becomes a set of condos or whatever.
Right, you've got some time to grow.
We'd love to see it.
Yeah, right, you've got time to get something, very, pretty, like, evergreens.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm talking about is having, landscaping, not, not a fence or anything along that line, but having the actual landscaping, the trees and that sort of thing.
And it seems, seems maybe a little nitpicky here, but how this plot looks will affect what kind of level of, of residential stuff goes in.
Well, there is residential house just to the west.
Right, right.
But it just looks like, if this looks like just an industrial grow facility, then no one's going to want a condo on the way next to it because we're a little gross. Don't even, I don't know, maybe they're going to help me.
Yeah, they're going to have a burn there anyway, but I, you know, it's, it's, the point is, is that it's, it's just, everything we've ever done, we've always had the landscaping. And I don't know on the sides necessarily whether or not there's any need there.
The front.
But certainly the front on Bowles Road.
Well, I think, I think the fence between your property and their house, that, that spices, but, yeah, that, the, the Bowles Road side.
It's just bare, basically.
We have an opportunity to make our town a little nicer, so, like, it's not like we're picking on you, it's...
Have to do it.
But I think we, you're right, commonly have some long-term growth to have some nice trees there that, you know, will complement the...
Yeah, I agree.
Do you have any guidance for the applicant in terms of type or quantity or...
Okay, eight trees and twenty-four shrubs.
I'd like to see more evergreens, so, plus have a keep the dust down. If there is dust, you can grab it.
Couple of sequoias would be nice, but...
No.
So should half of those eight trees be evergreens or more than that?
Sure.
Good for you. And I think you want some, have some scale. I think you want something fairly dense across the...
Right, yeah, yeah, I agree.
More evergreens in there here.
Plus it'll also shield you from the noise of the mining operation and, you know, I think dust that might come up from there. Hopefully we put in enough safeguards there, but regardless, it'll shield some of the noise at least and, and just make your place a little more comfortable, so that's what we're looking for. You know, Christmas tree lights and...
You're worried you're going to be loading and unloading and sooner that's going to be back there at the greenhouses?
Yeah, we, we don't have much loading, unloading. You know, once every three or four months, we'll bring in some soil on one of our personal trailers. Um, there, there's not a lot of industrial type of traffic for what we have going on.
So you're not going to extend that driveway then, that's currently there through the parking lot back to...
There's a little lay-down area just to the west of the building. The fence is just south of that, with that twelve-foot swing gate. We plan on using that lay-down area for any loading, unloading that we need to do.
How do you transport your plants then? To our...
Um, that's, that's, that's a secure transporter that just comes up to the front. They have their, they have their secure totes right through that little garage door area that we have. It's actually just right in there in front of the building.
And how often would that happen?
Once a month.
Once you get one. Do you have, do you have another operation anywhere in Michigan?
No, sir.
Uh, do you have a selling place in Michigan at all? A place that sells?
Uh, no, sir.
Strictly first-time out growers?
That's it.
And when do you plan on starting operations? If you got approval?
Probably operational within four or six months.
Commissioners, are there any other questions?
Just the one. When you said the lay-down area, is that an existing part of asphalt or is...
It is existing, yes, sir.
And what, where the dumpster used to sit?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so the fence will mirror right up to where that garage door is.
Yeah.
But we'll have a gate there, a secure gate, so then that way we can, we have to bring supplies to that area, we can, we also have to operate a crash, which you tend to use.
Okay. Okay.
And, thank you. Uh, general public, are there any, um, questions, answers, thoughts? Hearing none then, I will make the recommendation that with all of the conditions that we've added on here, um, that we accept the special land use review standards, A through L. Is there a second?
I'll start.
And Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Handwinder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Next one is the adult-use marijuana establishment special land use standards, and this goes from B through... Andy?
Yeah, we just like the thought.
Sure. We'll follow the same format. We'll go through all of the standards and then we'll ask questions and do all of that and have public, uh, input at that point too, so...
Okay. Um, so these are the specific special land use standards, so these are standards that apply only to marijuana facilities, as opposed to the previous set that we walked through that applied to every type of special land use in the city. So, uh, we, we start with item B because item A is in a, you know, regulatory standard that applies in the same sense as the others. So item B talks about the separation distances, which requires that, you know, a thousand feet from a preschool or childcare center, a thousand feet from a public or private K through twelve school, five-minute review from the C two district, and all of those standards are satisfied and they've shown that on the map they include with their application. Uh, orders we have talked about, um, so they, they did include an order mitigation plan. Um, they have proposed negative air pressure in the mean building. Um, and then they have, they talked about the, uh, the high-pressure fogging system. Um, they've also submitted, uh, calculations for, uh, you know, how much, you know, volume of air would be, would be moving and would be, uh, you know, clean. And so with those, we kind of ran through the math at the end of our, uh, item C here and the, we do already see all of the standards that are set for us in the city. There's only more than that. Item D states that it shall be operated and maintained at all times so that any byproducts or waste shall be properly and lawfully kept and disposed of. Um, so they propose, you know, a typical waste and recycling program on the site. There's a dumpster shown on the site plan. Um, meditative wastes, according to the application, are proposed to be destroyed and mixed with other materials in compliance with the, uh, with the Michigan regulatory, or the marijuana regulatory standards. Uh, if there, so, um, if there's questions about where they're going to store the, you know, the carts, then you can certainly ask, ask back, wasn't that shown on, on the site plan? They shouldn't be behind the fenced area, obviously, it's blocked. Um, but they appear to be in, in compliance in terms of, of the process for, for diluting the waste into an unorganized form. Um, item E precludes an establishment from being operated of the irreverence used over the actual purposes, but is not proposed here. Item F, um, says that any, any portion of the structure where energy usage and heat exceed typical residential use, such as a grow room, assortment of chemicals, shall be subject to inspection by the fire department to ensure compliance with applicable fire codes. Any fuels, fertilizers, et cetera, shall be stored in a secure and electric area and be in compliance with state pesticide laws and regulations. Um, so we talked about the power, uh, you know, need already. Um, the narrative states that pesticides and chemical storage would be approved by their, and marijuana regulatory agency, and the pesticide storage would be compliant with those regulations and guidelines. Uh, so there would be some products stored in a, in a dedicated storage area. Um, and they've indicated here that chemical management and still, still response plans would be created, although those have not been submitted. So this is something where, um, inspection approval by, by the fire department would be included as a condition of approval, uh, to make sure that they have adequate procedures in place to address any, any issues. Item G, uh, precludes an establishment from operating a, a hobby business that also sells alcohol and tobacco, which is not proposed. H says no drive-throughs, that's not proposed. I requires compliance with, uh, the act and the rules, uh, to finally be under that act, which may be addressed as a condition of approval. Uh, J enables the planning commission to require additional landscaping or screening beyond what's required by the ordinance. We've talked about landscaping already. Uh, item K requires that the owner maintain clear and adequate records. Um, documentation demonstrated that the products have been obtained from and are provided to other permitted and licensed operations. Um, so we don't have record maintenance addressed in the narrative and so, and so that's something that we could ask as a condition of approval, um, as we've done with, I think, every single one of these, uh, we include a condition that states that the city has a right to examine, monitor, and audit records and documentation and all that would be needed to hold the city upon request. Item M, all necessary building electrical plumbing mechanical permits shall be obtained. Um, that would be also addressed as a condition of approval and the city has procedures in place to make sure that that stuff happens. And then N is kind of a catch-all provision that says if there is a conflict, uh, the zoning ordinance is preempted by the, by the marijuana act and the state's rule. So, uh, if there's, if there's a conflict somewhere that crops up, you know, later on down the line, then, you know, the, the state rule controls over the city's, city's standards. So we listed, so in our recommendation here, we have...
Let's, let's, let's go through these first, if you don't mind. Uh, the adult-use marijuana establishment special land use standards, B through N. Commissioners, any questions?
Uh, you're not holding a dumpster?
We have a couple of rollout containers that we'll use during operations for small throwaway things, but we don't really generate much waste and we don't anticipate using our mulch stocks and leftover soil into the dumpster that'll be reused.
You know, the waste in private or the, it gets mixed in with organics like the coffee or whatever, that too will be going out in the dumpster, you know, two-wheeled dumpster?
No, none, none of that gets thrown away as a dumpster. All of that stuff gets composted and reused into a soil mixture.
Any other questions, commissioners?
So what happens if a pod drops in the ground? You just pick it up? It's not...
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what that was.
What if, uh, you're, you're harvesting and things fall in the ground? Is there a, what is, what is the procedure? I mean, that's a grow facility, is there a cleaning process that takes place on your site? Drying on your site?
Yeah, so we, uh, we obviously have a process, a contamination process in place. Um, you know, it's very, very clean, sterile environment, um, all hard surfaces, so the greenhouse will have a, a, a concrete floor, so, you know, we have the ability to clean and maintain. Uh, we have a decontamination process in between each harvest as well as an ongoing IPM program throughout the grow facility, uh, cycle, I'm sorry, just to ensure no mold, mildews, um, correct?
We'll use biodegradable grow bags as well, so if they were to fall, nothing would break, so be able to potentially reuse it. Um, again, composting soil and, and tools that were, you know, contaminated when they fell, we'd be doing.
I guess I'm more so concerned if, let's say, you had to get rid of a, uh, a pod or a bud, how would you go above doing that?
So that is, there is a mulching, you know, we mulch it and it has to be mixed with a certain percentage of other waste and then at that point, if we started having that process, obviously we'd have to have a dumpster and then that would have to get taken off-site to a, a waste facility.
Public, any questions, concerns, thoughts? Hearing none then, I will make the motion that we accept the adult-use marijuana establishment special land use standard to B through N. Is there a second?
I got a second.
So questions?
Do they just acknowledge they needed a dumpster? There's no question for a dumpster. They got two, they got the roll-offs, but then...
We're not opposed to keeping the dumpster, we just, it wasn't a necessity. We just don't have that much waste, right? I think, I know the question is like something breaks or something along those lines and I can see that as a potential for happening and two roll-offs. Compared to that, I, I'm not entirely sure. I, I don't know what could break that would require us to dispose of a lot of things. Again, if plants were to fall, you know, we'd, you know, remediate, remediate that the right way, just like we would have, you know, discarded plants after a harvest, right? Similar fashion. So, again, not opposed to the dumpster, just wasn't necessary and again, um, where it sits today is, oh, you know, I think a little bit of an eyesore. Again, we can landscape around that and do different things, but it was just not a necessity in our mind, but not opposed to it.
Is there a, uh, stipulation where the dumpsters have to be secured in, or the refuges have to be secured?
So if, if, if there were a dumpster, it should be in a, I mean, it's got to be accessible to the hauler, but then, you know, I would suggest a requirement that it be, you know, surrounded by a minimum six-foot fence on three sides with a lock gate on a fourth side to prevent any kind of unauthorized access into it.
What, what you're proposing now, you would keep it inside?
That's correct. That's right.
Yeah, so if, yeah, if, if it's inside, then it's not an issue. If it's outside, then you'd have to...
That was definitely concerning to us. For anybody walking by, what do you got tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to hear about that too. That's why we're not a big fan of the dumpster where it's at currently.
Just because you don't get an chance, but you're, you're, all of a sudden you've got a lot of waste at a capacity that's more than their two rollaways and they don't have a dumpster, you got, then you got an issue or something, but I don't know about, amount of wastage, you know what I mean? Two rollaways inside is adequate. Probably better than having a dumpster with a tiny bit of stuff outside that isn't subject to scavenging in any way.
Yeah. Is the compost pile going to be inside?
Inside, yeah, it's how effective fenced area is.
But if it'd be a fenced area, it won't, it won't be inside. But then again, your compost, it's all the...
All natural. If you were to, if they take out, okay, this plant is diseased or something, we're going to throw it in the compost pile if it's not secure.
The compost pile will be behind the eight-foot fence and lock gate, so we plan on securing that, just like we're securing the greenhouse with that.
Are there cameras in them? In these stations?
Um, yeah, so they have submitted a security plan that shows the location of, um, cameras in and around buildings and the VU and calling.
I think it's in their best interest to, yeah.
We'll want to dump, yeah, yeah. Yeah, this isn't a, this is just a non-necessary thing at this point for us, but if we do have additional, we'll want to come back and say we want a dumpster potentially.
I'm just thinking in consistency with other places and other grow facilities, some of the similar questions and proposed, um, refuges, you know, disposal things and just making sure.
Yeah, and I think we'll have, we will have cameras covering the property, so even where we compost, we'll be able to see what's going on there.
And if they, so if they don't have dumpsters now, if they decide at some point in the future that they need them and it has to be stored outside for some reason, then, um, that, it would be a fairly simple, it probably wouldn't have to come back here, but they would submit an updated site plan to Sue and I and then, you know, we would make sure that it has the gate and the fencing around it and stuff, so it's secure and then we can sign off on that administratively, if that's what they were going to do.
So we can add that?
Yep.
Any other questions? I'm going to close the public hearing then. Um, it's been moved and seconded and discussion. Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Handwinder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Finally, our recommendations, Andy? With all the conditions?
Yes, so we had originally, we highlighted kind of a few items for discussion. I think those have been resolved. So our staff report included 27 conditions. So we're adding three more to that list. Those three are that the property must be connected to public water and sewer if required by city ordinances. Second, so that would be condition 28. Condition 29 would be that the applicant will provide eight trees, at least four of which must be evergreens, and 24 shrubs along Bowes Road and Charles Kennedy Landscaping Plan to that effect for review and approval by the zoning enforcement officer. And the third one, which would be condition 30, is that if a dumpster is added to the property, an updated site plan shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer for review and approval. That'll add, the dumpster must be enclosed by a six-foot fence with a lockable gate.
I think we talked about a 31 would be the eight-foot fence.
Yeah, so I'm, the fencing section of the ordinance puts a limit of fence height at six feet. The, the industrial district standards talk about having, you know, a, a minimum fence height of six feet. So if you want to require the fence height to be eight feet, I think you could probably do that under what is, however you, the industrial standards, it sounds like, you know, the six-foot would be the minimum, you know, required around an industrial operation. So if you want to stipulate that the fence, the fencing around the property, the eight-feet in height, you can do that.
I, I would like to see eight foot.
What have we done in the past though?
Well, that's my question also, as I think we said, eight foot at the, at the grow facility. Pretty sure we did.
Can we, we can check on that? Just make it whatever we put there.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Well, I want to be consistent.
Yeah, whatever we approve of that one, this one's the same.
I mean, it's the same with the other conditions that we've added here, so I don't, I don't think we're changing anything here.
Okay, so the 31st condition will be the fence height shall be consistent with previous growing operations approved by the city.
I, again, any other questions or thoughts? I then will make the recommendation that the Trinity cannabis special land use be approved with the 31 conditions added to it. Is there a second?
I'll start.
And is there a discussion? Sue, voice vote please.
Commissioner Handwelder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes, thank you. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Our next new business is C, preparing planning commission annual report for council. And I understand we have a, a candidate here that would love to do it. Michael, I understand you're, you're willing to?
I would, I would.
Sue and Andy will help you in every, in every aspect. And Tony can also back you up. Right? Thanks, thanks. Staff report, Sue, do you have anything?
I have nothing further.
Andy, do you have anything?
I think I have good.
Thank you. Commissioners, one?
Cold out, that's all I got.
See what that...
Good for skiing.
Go. Colin?
Oh.
Marty?
Oh, good.
Don?
I'm good.
Amanda?
Actually, do you have a question?
Yeah.
I know. I'm trying to be a little proactive. A couple of years ago, when we were doing zoning and city council was doing their part in the marijuana regulations and everything, at that time, there was, the Methodist Church had a preschool, and so the rollaway property was, was in 1,000 feet. I was not present at the meeting where there was an applicant to put in an establishment at the rollaway. I've noticed that that building is now for sale again. So my question is, is there anything that we or, or city council should be considering or looking at? Because it seems like the carts are all sort of even again. This is more of a question that I know should be discussed in here, here in the city council.
Andy probably have a clearer answer to that.
Well, so the, if you guys recall, I think it was last summer, maybe in May or something, the planning commission had actually recommended to the city council that the, that the section of zoning ordinance relating to marijuana be amended that would prohibit marijuana facilities east of the river in general. So that was approved by the planning commission and it did not pass at city council, so it died there. And so that change was never made.
Andy, was it turned down though, or was it just not...
I do not know the particulars in terms of how the mechanics of that worked out. I mean, at this point, it's been so long that I would say that it was turned down, is I guess how I would interpret that. So if that's something that the planning commission would want to revisit, I think the best thing to do would be to, you know, redraft that ordinance, which we could provide you basically the exact same thing. The planning commission would need to hold a public hearing and then re-recommend that to city council for consideration again.
Before redrafting it, can you find out, can you find out what happened to it in city council? If it was turned down, why?
I'll start with Mike. I wasn't at the meeting where this happened, so I'm not sure what the discussion was exactly or, so I, I can't, I can't speak to what, all the reasoning.
It's possible for us to find out, though. Like, is that a question you can ask? Hey, that's, this turned out so good. So Marty, can you ask? Okay. Thanks. Mike, can you open it up? Can I crack it up? Just to find out, because I mean, why put something exactly the same in front of the evidence?
But I don't think, I don't think it would hurt probably to resemit stuff like that because I've said before, we need to start, we've been at this long enough where we need to make sure that we're up to date on a lot of different things, you know, like the, your air filtration system, all brand new, and I'm eager to read and figure this all out because every time, the gel, that was something new that we didn't know about. Right? So we all got, we know about that now, so I just think it's good to always just go back and relook.
And that's kind of my point in bringing that, that up again, is because things have happened and changed between the preschool and then now rollaway being up for sale again. It's kind of, like I said, you're at kind of a leveled ground again, and maybe it's great.
I can't remember, I, I couldn't tell you. So much stuff passes in front of us, sometimes it becomes a little bit more...
Well, even, even if it still was open to the council, it probably would be a good idea for us to reiterate our proposal.
Right, so I mean, without, I mean, it's already written, if I, so I can provide you a copy of what you approved last year at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll be exactly the same, like, I'm not going to change anything, I'll just hand it out, so there's no like extra...
Do we do the public hearing at the same meeting?
Well, I guess that, that's a puke. So if you want to do that, you could, it might be a good idea to get that in front of you, you know, kind of think about it and make sure that's the road you want to go down again before you schedule that, because like you're scheduling it right now without even, I mean, with that, again, not knowing the reasoning and all that, so it might be better to...
Let's, let's...
Yes, why it's turned down, we look, we look at what was submitted, figure out what we're going to come up with.
And then we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, so then you could hold the hearing in March and then make a recommendation at that time and, you know, the public council and...
Right.
So I'll, I'll provide that to you, thanks for being there. If there's interest by the planning commission, we can, I mean, it's been a few years now and so there's a lot of communities that pass ordinances that permit and regulate marijuana establishments, so if there's interest in kind of seeing, you know, what some of the newer ordinances are doing and how they're structured and some of the maybe newer regulations and everything, the public example as well. From Michigan, you know, last time we were, there weren't a lot of, many Michigan examples we were looking at. You know, a few local, but a lot of them were from other states, so we might have a little, something that's a little bit more dialed in to Michigan statutes in case of laws and things like that, so we can provide some copy of the initial ordinances for your review at the next meeting as well, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, because then we're staying on top, or I feel we're staying on top of what's going on around us. I mean, I'm very proud of what we put together, but there's always room for improvement for any time, and as time goes on, new things do come into play, so I think at least once in June, we should be able to do that.
Final, I've got two things. Sue, do you remember when the meeting is for Vergence and Little Township and us, the joint meeting?
Two years ago.
Um, I think they said, I want to see, maybe possibly the spring.
Yeah, it was definitely spring, it was either April or May, I can't remember. Would you add that to the...
Yep.
Planning commission meeting dates and revise that?
Yes.
So when you post it up on the wall or whatever, and on, on the line, will you have that, have that data on there, please?
Sure thing.
And then I want to, I want to thank everybody for staying with us tonight and being on the planning commission, thank you, and look forward to a good new year, so. And if we have any questions, we can go from there. Andy, the master plan, do we, it seems like it's been quite a while since we've looked at it. I'm going to guess it was 2016.
I will check. I feel like it's been more recent than that, but I will take a look and see when it will be up. So you have to review it every five years?
Yeah, because we did the master plan and then we did the zoning ordinance after that, so that's why I'm thinking of those two places.
I'll check and, and see where you're at with that. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for the community? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Support?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will we stand in here? Thank you.